Welcome to our meeting. The date is September 3, 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The city of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The city clerk will now perform roll call.
Councilmember Mendoza. Present. Councilmember Kaczynski.
Present.
Councilmember Hazy.
Present.
Councilmember Sheard.
Present.
Councilmember Pollak.
Present.
Councilmember Fiski.
Present.
Council President Stelk.
Present.
Councilmember Nickerson.
Present.
Councilmember Lanfair.
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
And Mayor Steele.
Present. Also present are Jill Grenier, the city clerk, Patrick Brown, the Assistant City Administrator, CFO, Carrie Fisk, the city attorney, Keith Kurtz, the Public Works Director, and Matthew Gleason, the Finance Director. A sign-up sheet was available in the lobby for individuals wishing to provide input on any of tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward, state your name and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking. No one has come forward, so we will continue with public hearing 5A. Public hearing on fiscal year 2024 to 2025, Annual Single-City Budget and Annual Appropriations Bill. Good evening, Mr. Brown.
Good evening.
Please present for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Tonight, this is just an overview of the citywide budget. The fiscal '24-'25 actual estimated disbursements and transfers is 14.3% or 40.3 million higher than fiscal year '24 adopted budget. Part of this is due to delayed capital purchases from fiscal year '24, supply chain issues, Good Life District disbursements, and a grants placeholder to have appropriation All funds revenue projections for fiscal year '25 increased 8.1% or 21.3 million over to '24 budget. Again, part of this is Good Life District funds. Moving into property tax, the '24 valuations for the city of Grand Island increased over '23 valuation by 204 million or 5.6%. The city is requesting the same property tax ask as was in fiscal year '23 and '24 of 12,000 or $12,207,540. This will decrease the mill levy to .261049. CRA property tax ask is $798,990, which is a tax increase of $23,271. This still decreases the mill levy to .017086. Combined, the city is requesting $13,6530. Total sales tax revenue is forecasted at 29.1 million for fiscal year '25. It is a 1.5% increase or a $430,000 increase over fiscal '24. The increase is in line with the recent trend in sales tax for Grand Island, but slightly lower than the forecasted inflationary data that we've been seeing. All other revenue sources in a general fund account for 35.3 million, the increase over fiscal year '24 budget of 692,000 or 2%. The increase is in line with recent trends for Grand Island, but slightly lower than forecasted inflationary data. An increase in transfers fiscal year '25 by 9.4 million over fiscal year '24 due to moving general fund reserves to capital projects. Fire Station 3 is 5.4 million, ladder track at 2.3 million, 1.9 million for the police vehicle storage and training facility. For fiscal '25, FTE requests, and granted actually, are the following. Five, there's four additions and one reclass. Police sergeant and a police lieutenant for the police department, fire captain for the fire and ambulance department. This person is, will be more in the training than anything else. A plumbing and mechanical inspector for building services, and a reclass of an admin assistant from part-time to full-time. Capital improvement project summary for fiscal year '25 is $84.6 million. This includes equipment as well. So, this is on the website under the finance page, and you could see that it's all listed out by what funds are going to come out of. Some of these, obviously not all of these funds will be used during fiscal year '25, so we have a lot going on. And that is the end of my presentation.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
We now continue with public hearing 5B. Public hearing on fiscal year 2024 to 2025, General Property and Community Redevelopment Authority Tax Request. Again, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I've touched on this in the prior presentations. This is our property tax ask. This would be, it'll come to you as a resolution next Tuesday. So, again, the city is keeping the same tax ask, and that would be 12,889,471 taxing, let's see here. So, that's, so if, if we kept the same mill levy and applied it to the new valuation, the tax revenue will be 12.9 million dollars, an increase of 681,000. The city is not doing that. We're keeping the tax ask the same, so it's going to lower our mill levy. So, it's, we're saving taxpayers $682,000. With CRA, there is a slight increase in tax ask of 23,271. Again, this results in a levy decrease from 1.017515 to .017086. And below here is, the mill levies broke out from '24 to '25. Now, with this, I'm just doing a quick calculation. Say, for example, if you had a $200,000 house in 2024, the value of it, the city taxes alone would make it 58629. If your valuation did not decrease or increase in '25, your property tax would go down to $30 to $556.27. So, you know, all depending on how your valuation goes is how your tax will go. And that is it for that presentation.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Before we proceed with our next item, I'd just like to emphasize something Mr. Brown said. He said that for fiscal year 2024-2025, Annual Single-City Budget, we're asking for the same property tax ask as the year previous. And it needs to be mentioned, you know, we just watched the Nebraska Legislature finish a 17-day special session when they took up the issue of property taxes and ways to reduce property taxes. There was a lot of discussion, there was a lot of ideas, and it resulted in a small change that will, that will result in a 3% drop for some taxpayers. That's what was passed by the Nebraska Legislature. I would just like to say to the people of Grand Island, and Mr. Brown, I think you can confirm this, we have kept our property tax ask the same for six years in a row. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And I want to thank this council and previous councils who realized that property taxes cause homeowners a lot of difficulty, and this council and previous council have been proactive in trying to address the issue. And this council has also realized that if we ask for less property taxes, we have to be innovative in our budgeting, which I think we have proven to be. So, I think it's a feather in the cap of the city that we have been trying for six years in a row to be very careful with property taxes to, for the benefit of the people of Grand Island. Public hearing 5C. Public hearing on fiscal year 2024-2025, Parking District Number 2, which is the ramp, its tax request. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is the same tax ask from last year of $9,090. The mill levy goes from .012076 to .010470. So, again, this is just for the, for the parking garage. Thank you.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
We have completed our meeting agenda for the city council's special meeting that started at 6 o'clock. We will proceed with another meeting agenda of the city council as soon as the city clerk can reset the procedures.
I'd have got around to it.
I got you. I got you, homie.
Welcome to our special meeting. The time is 6:13 PM. The date is September 3, 2024. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The city of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The city clerk will now perform roll call.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Present.
Councilmember Kaczynski.
Present.
Councilmember Hazy.
Present.
Councilmember Sheard.
Present.
Councilmember Pollak.
Present.
Councilmember Fiski.
Present.
Council President Stelk.
Present.
Councilmember Nickerson.
Present.
Councilmember Lanfair.
Present.
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
And Mayor Steele.
Present. Also present are Jill Grenier, the city clerk, Laura McAlune, the city administrator, Patrick Brown, the Assistant City Administrator, CFO, Carrie Fisk, the city attorney, and Keith Kurtz, the Public Works Director, and also Matthew Gleason, the Finance Director. Individuals who have appropriate items for city council consideration should complete the request for future agenda items form located at the information booth. If the issue can be handled administratively without council action, notification will be provided. If the item is scheduled for a meeting or study session, notification of the date will be given. A sign-up sheet was available in the lobby for individuals wishing to provide input on any of tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward, state your name and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking. No one has come forward, and we will continue with ordinance 6A, number 9982, Consideration of Vacation of a Portion of Easement in Stewart Place Subdivision 2104 and 2120 South Blaine Street. And this is the final reading. Mr. Kurtz, good evening. Please present for us.
Good evening. Third time is the charm, I hope. So, this request came in several, well, probably over a month ago. Someone requested to build a garage in their backyard, requested a license agreement to build on top of the easement that is currently in the backyard. And upon investigation, there is nothing in that utility easement that's in the backyard. It's kind of in a weird spot. Over the course of the years, these property lines have shifted a little bit, and that's how we ended up with eight-foot of easement, kind of in the middle of somebody's backyard. So, we researched with all the utility companies, communication companies, fiber companies. Nobody has anything in said easement, so with that, we decided it would be the cleanest just to request to vacate the easement. So, we are requesting you to act on that item.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Council members, a motion is in order. Ms. Kaczynski.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve ordinance number 9982 on final reading.
And Mr. Lanfair?
I second.
Thanks to both of you. Any discussion?
Ordinance number 9982, an ordinance to vacate a portion of an existing easement and to provide for filing this ordinance in the Office of the Register of Deeds of Hall County, Nebraska, to repeal any ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and to provide for publication and effective date of this ordinance. Please vote. Motion adopted.
Third time is the charm. We'll now take up ordinance 6B, number 9983, Consideration to Adopt a Good Life District Economic Development Program to Reorganize and Retitle Chapter 38 of the Grand Island City Code to Add Article 2, quote, "Good Life District Economic Development Program," close quote, to Chapter 38, along with code sections 38-12, to authorize any other actions necessary to implement the program and to provide for publication and an effective date of this ordinance. Council members, is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules regarding ordinance number 9983? Mr. Pollak.
Yes, I'd make a motion to, excuse me, do away with the statutory rules.
Thank you. And Mr. Lanfair, do you second?
Mr. Mayor, I second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
Mrs. Fisk, please present about this matter to us.
Councilmembers, I'm here for your, brought for your consideration the Good Life District Economic Development Program ordinance that the city council has been authorized to adopt now that voters have approved the development of a Good Life District Economic Development Program. You guys have heard about this program repeatedly throughout the last nine months or so. This is the actual ordinance that lets us put that legislative gift to good use here. The ordinance itself contains a couple of minor housekeeping provisions. The first thing it does is reorganize Chapter 38 of City Code. Chapter 38 of City Code currently contains the Economic Development Program we commonly refer to as LB840. This would move that into its own article and create a second article for the Good Life District Economic Development Program. So, the first two sections of this ordinance are largely housekeeping to do that, so we can get this program ordinance put into City Code. The Good Life District Economic Development Program ordinance, the bulk of this 16-page ordinance, follows the statutory rules that were required to do to adopt this program. It accomplishes a few pretty basic things. It establishes how money comes into this program. It establishes how requests for that money will come into the program and be evaluated. It addresses how the fund will be managed and held. It grants the city council the authority to issue and leverage and pledge proceeds for bonds, should we choose to use bonds to finance any programs or projects within this program. It addresses how funds will go out, and it addresses how the program will evolve as it goes. As council is aware, we are the first in the state to adopt a Good Life District Economic Development Program, and though I'd like to say we probably nailed it with the first ordinance, you and I both know that's probably not realistic. So, this ordinance is, for lack of better words, a living document. As we develop this program, as this program hits year 5, 10, 25, or 30, it's likely this program ordinance may need to change and may need to evolve. I have drafted it and prepared it for you using the framework the legislature has provided and included all eligible costs and all of your rights and remedies. You do have the option, as this program grows and evolves, to restrict this program further than it is in this program ordinance. So, when you take a look at some of those rules, know that as you review applications, if you would like those limitations, we can put them in place at a later date through program amendments. This program ordinance is a lot of legal language and legal requirements required by the legislature. Specifically, you'll notice provisions like the legal description of the approved district, language related to the issuance of bonds. Those provisions are necessary to make sure we are in compliance with state law. The actual meat of what you probably care most about is the creation of the Good Life District Fund, which is a restricted fund in which all of the revenue generated by this program will be deposited, held, and then distributed. Distributions from that fund can only be made for certain expenses and in support of projects that are approved and authorized by you through the use of this ordinance. It creates the local source of revenue necessary to fund this program. And as you'll see, if you look at it, it's been drafted to simply replace the revenue that the state has foregone. This does not represent any increase in taxes to any citizens of the city of Grand Island. It simply will direct businesses instead of remitting 5.5% to the state. Businesses within the program area will remit 2.75% to the state and 2.75% to the Good Life District Occupation Tax to be deposited into this fund. So, the effective tax rate for you or I shopping at any business inside this program area will be the same. The ordinance also creates the mechanism by which money will come out of this fund. There are really three key ways that program funds can be authorized by you for expenditure. The first would be direct applications made by city administration, either for the use of bonds or to pay city expenses related to any projects or improvements within the program area. This might be something like a road project or sewers, dirt works, the sort of things that the city would pay for. The second would be the program ordinance authorizes the city to make requests for development proposals. In applicants, in response to the city's request for development proposals, can also request an award of program funds in support of whatever they propose to solve whichever proposal you might do. And then the third way that takes up the bulk of the program ordinance is for a direct application for program funds. This ordinance defines what a qualifying business is and what eligible expenses they can request program funds for, and includes most of the state law requirements for the use of these program funds for those transformational, extraordinary sorts of projects. We're required by law to include the application process, the review process, fee structures, and enough stuff to give any applicant notice as to what might be expected of them as they prepare an application for you. That application will be done on a form to be developed by the city administrator and will first undergo an administrative review process. The program ordinance outlines that application review process. Once that application review process has been done administratively, a packet will be prepared for you, for council, for consideration, and in the end, you will make the final decision as to whether or not to award program funds, to approve applications, to send an applicant back with instructions. And so, these application requirements have been designed to give you the answers to the questions you may need to be able to evaluate those applications, and also to include the requirements that you'll need to do before you can approve the distribution of program funds. This, the other key thing that this ordinance does is it creates a path for you to suggest and make changes. This program ordinance can be amended by a two-thirds vote of city council throughout the life of this ordinance. You could, there are a significant number of provisions you could choose to narrow, customize, or amend. For example, if you're seeing too much of a certain type of application, or you'd like to include restrictions on funds, or you wish we were requiring of applicants a certain type of document, we can come back in and modify this program ordinance as, as we start to see what sort of transformational proposals you might get. I can go through the rest of this, or I can just answer questions if you'd rather me not read you a 16-page ordinance.
I think they're willing to proceed with just questions at this point, and I guess, Mr. Sheard, do you have a motion?
I do, Mayor. I move that we pass ordinance 9983 to adopt a Good Life Economic, Good Life District Economic Development Program.
Thank you, Mr. Sheard. Mr. Hossi.
I would second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hossi. Discussion, Mr. Lanfair?
I have two questions. The public voted, they said, do we want this, so let's go for it. But who handles, really, is yes or no? Does the city handle the funds that is generated, or does it go right to Woodsonia?
City handles all the funds, the processing of the funds and the application.
You know, I don't mean they have to come begging in a council meeting. It can be on a consent agenda, but I want to make sure we have, are keeping track of the money.
All program funds will be administered by the city after you have voted and authorized their expenditures.
Okay, second. We're giving up a significant piece of real estate here with a lot of value. What real estate are we getting in return?
We have not given up any real estate.
So, this program ordinance just creates the Good Life District Economic Development Program. What's in front of you today is not an application, so it is, it is the entirety of the program.
We're not getting any assets, physical assets, back then.
All, all you're getting from this program ordinance is 16 less pieces of paper.
You know, I would even take the soccer fields. That would be an asset to Grand Island if they gave them to us, the titles to them.
Yeah, and so, as applications come through, regardless of their size and scope, those are the sorts of discussions that'll be had on an application-to-application basis through this ordinance.
Okay. I'll leave it there.
Ms. Kaczynski.
Thank you, Mayor. When is the earliest we could see an application from anyone? Once this ordinance passes, what's our timeframe on that?
Hypothetically, somebody could apply tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Depends on how fast they type, I suppose.
Okay. And then, early on in one of these discussions, and I can't recall if it was a study session or an executive session, I remember asking if this created any additional accounting burden to the businesses within the district, and I, at that time, felt that they were still going to submit the five and a half or whatever got determined to the state, and then the state would send that money to the district. But now, as reading this and listening to you, I'm hearing that they're going to have to send money to the state and then money to us. So, it has created an additional burden on all of our businesses in that district.
Well, the way we've timed the... Well, the way we've timed the implementation of this occupation tax, already businesses were going to have to reprogram their point-of-sale systems on October first to deal with that reduction in the state sales tax. This allows that to happen all at the same time, so they're only making one change instead of multiple changes. So, like all tax collection, there is a small burden, but ideally, we have minimized that as much as humanly possible.
And funds in the Good Life District Fund, if those businesses occur any costs in having to reprogram their point-of-sale systems or collection systems, can those be dispersed to those businesses?
No.
There's no mechanism for them to recapture that cost.
That's unfortunate.
Councilmember, one of the reasons, we talked originally about doing the interim temporary occupation tax and then proceeding with a sales tax, a local option sales tax, on January one, and then that would be the point in time when the state would collect it. As Carrie mentioned, this ordinance can be amended, but the reason staff are recommending just an occupation tax in the ordinance at this point is because we don't know what the legislature will do. There were proposals during the special session that would allow the legislature to increase substantially the three percent that they charged to the city. So, at this point, we've drafted it only as an occupation tax, which we collect, we control, and then we'll see what happens, what comes out of the next legislative session before we come back with a recommendation on sales tax.
And then, just kind of a comment in light of some news articles I saw today, with our authority to amend the program and put limitations on who can receive this, I believe it would be wise to put in some language that says, "Our occupation tax dollars Good Life funding districts cannot be utilized for religious organizations," whether that's via a religious organization themselves or a developer, contractor, whoever may be doing that, because I don't think tax dollars should be funding secular organizations, so.
One of the requirements of the Good Life District Economic Development Act, and one of the many criteria you guys will all be charged with when evaluating applications is an applicant's impact on the tax base, whether it expands the tax base, whether it generates enough revenue. So, I think most non-revenue generating projects are going to have a hurdle in front of them to meet that eligibility. I hate to say never, because people do creative things, but that is one of those key considerations, whether it's a religious or any other nonprofit or non-taxable project.
Okay. I just feel like we are up against someone very creative on this, and I don't want our citizens to be funding religion, because it shouldn't be that way, so. Thank you.
Mr. Nickerson.
Well, thank you, Carrie, for summarizing a lot of this at the beginning. I think it's important that we recognize some important things that have occurred over the last few months. First of all, I think we need to recognize the role that Woodsonia has played here with the vision and ability to secure an approved application from the state. Without that, we wouldn't be here tonight. Somebody else may have done it down the road, but we would not have been here tonight. They deserve recognition for that. This council deserves recognition for supporting, allowing this to go to a vote, even though we didn't necessarily all agree on all the details of that, and nor should we. We at least, I don't remember if it was a ten oh vote or hundred percent support or not, but we did send that forward to our voters, which then prompted a marketing team that had to pull together some things very quickly in a very short order of time to try to convince folks, or at least to educate, what this was all about in the best way possible. And that occurred. Finally, the voters, on a two-to-one margin, came back and said, "We believe this program is going to be good for Grand Island." And I think that speaks volumes, because personally, I didn't think that we were going to see that kind of support. I was going to be happy with fifty-one percent. But to see the community has showed the same support as it did for an LB eight forty proposal or anything else, it tells me that our community believes in economic development. I think it tells me they believe in our council. I think it tells me they believe that we will deliver what we say we will, and I think that's all good things. So, I appreciate that and their support of us to move forward. And lastly, our legal department, which now has got to pull all this together and be the first one to pull an ordinance together that can start the ball rolling, and we can start collecting the funds that we need to, to make this successful. The things I like about the ordinance that I've seen so far was it does give the council oversight, and by giving the council oversight of the projects, it really allows the public oversight. That's the key. It's not just going to be council, because we will receive input, I hope, on the projects as they come forward, to know what we want as a community. That's important. The other part is the ability to modify this. Nothing, there are no city codes set in stone that I'm aware of. Everything can always be modified, I'm sure. But this does allow us that chance, as you said. As things progress and we find that there might be a few nuances here and there that we need to change or update, we can do that. Those are good things. I did ask you a few questions. I don't know if you got hit with very many questions from other council members, but I was not concerned, but just had a question about, we were very specific about the two point seven five percent, because we knew that there was a possibility that the state could increase the sales tax if they ever go that route to increase revenue, and apparently we're entitled to half of whatever that is. But you made it very clear to me that there has to be a specific number that we can collect. So, we can't just say half of the city's sales tax. So, you nailed that one for me of why we do that. I was also surprised to see that the city was going to collect versus the state, and through also a very good explanation, which we just heard from our administrator and you, that it's probably very wiser for us to do that. It may, we may incur some, the three percent cost, but it should be a lot cheaper than five percent or twenty-two percent or whatever might come down the pipeline later. So, again, thought has gone into this ordinance, which is good. You don't just put words on paper without thinking. So, it tells me that there's been a lot of thought going on, because we're not the only moving part in this. There are other things that can affect what we can do. The one thing that gave me heartburn, still gave me heartburn, are fees. And I don't know what the rest of the council thinks, but as we looked through that fee structure, I saw a quantum leap from the nine point nine million mark to the ten million mark, which went from twenty thousand dollar application fee to fifty thousand dollar application fee. I got a thing about fees. I get tired of paying fees. I think we've got to be fair to developers as well, and I think that's too big of a quantum leap to go from someone that had a nine point eight million dollar project and was charged twenty thousand application fee to somebody that had a ten point three million dollar project, and all of a sudden, they're going to pay fifty thousand dollars. I think there needs to be more incremental steps in there, and I don't think it's unreasonable to do that. I don't know what the rest of you think. If we want to bombard people with fifty thousand dollars for a ten-plus-million-dollar project, I guess as a body, we'll say, "Do it." I don't like it. I think it's too much from the ten million mark up. I think we could have an incremental mark, about two or three more steps, and anything above twenty million, I think we could, I could justify fifty thousand, but a ten million dollar project, I have trouble with that. That's the only thing that sticks in my craw through this, and we talked about fees, I talked about fees a while back with the CRA, that one sticks in my craw on that as well. I just think we need to be fair to developers as well, because they're the ones that are going to help make this successful. I really liked the work you went into it, I appreciate the detail and a lot of the thought process that went into it, and I do look forward to good things down the road here. I'm just interested in if there's any feedback from the other council members on fees, should you so be inclined to discuss that, so. Thank you.
Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Carrie, I just have a couple of questions. The first one is, in this ordinance, it has the district boundaries. And so, if at some later date, we change or ask to change the boundaries of the district, this ordinance will have to come back and be revisited in order to facilitate different district boundaries. Does bringing that back still take seven members to approve the changing of the district boundaries or anything else that we might have adopted at that time?
Any change would take a two-thirds vote. If we, if the program boundaries are amended to include new property, we would need a discussion, there'd be an implementation of that additional occupation tax as well, so some of that delay would actually probably be good to make sure we're ready to let all those new businesses know that they too will be subject to that imposition. Because of the timelines DED uses to provide notice to the Department of Revenue to reduce the state's sales tax, that takes a significant period of time, so we would have time to do multiple readings, but yeah, it would require a two-thirds vote.
Okay, and then, really, my second question, and it's going to be off Mitch's comments. Well, my first question is, if the council denies an application, is the fee refundable?
The way it's drafted now, no, it would not be refundable. The notion being, by the point in time it gets to you, there's a lot of administrative work that would have gone into that administrative review by administration, finance, legal, Public Works. The public hearing costs would be fixed in the same, the cost of development of any specialty contracts or distribution schedules would be the same. Ideally speaking, we'll be presenting to you applications that are ready to go for your approval. That said, that is, if that turns out to be, if you turn out to be denying them at a high rate, that is one of many provisions that could be amended in the future. And ideally speaking, if you're getting a bunch of applications that you're denying, we probably need other amendments and changes as well to figure out how to get better, more high-quality applications. May we be so lucky as to get that many applications?
And so, my just last comment about fees in general is, we are charging a three percent administrative fee, so we are already getting an administrative fee just off the revenue stream. And so, to have an additional fee on top of the administrative fee that we're already collecting, it seemed to be, it was more punitive in nature as opposed to covering the costs, and so, I haven't really, we haven't looked at what does it cost to go through the application and to administer the program. So, I have, we haven't looked at that, so I don't know if it's fair or not fair, but because we're charging a three percent administrative fee built into the revenue, the fee is on top of that, so there's really two layers of fees.
The administrative fee is designed to cover those day-to-day costs, development, the application, implementation of the program fund, distributions from the fund. The application fee is designed to be targeted to the specific request for program funds. So, for example, if I make a five million dollar request for program funds on a hundred million dollar program, depending on the type of program, that may require a lot more specialty review, may require additional specific contracts to be developed. There isn't a one-size-fits-all approach, at least that we know of now, so each application will have specialty needs above and beyond that application fee. But again, if, as this evolves, if that application fee is disproportionate to the actual costs of evaluating an application, it can be amended. We tried to kind of look at what reasonable costs for that specialty development would be, and the larger the project, the more need for specialty review for additional work it takes, and ideally, hopefully, we hit the mark right on the actual costs associated with it, but.
Council, the fees are our best guess. These are intended to be large transformational projects. It's very possible that we will get a single application for two-hundred-and-fifty acres. The fee that is being charged with the application, just like our fees for a CRA, a redevelopment plan, a TIF application, are not intended to cover the cost of administering the program. They're intended to cover, like Carrie said, the work that we will need to do, and more than likely, because of the scale of these types of projects, have to hire consultants and experts to help us with evaluating applications. So, we will obviously monitor what, the amount of work that we're doing, but because there isn't a model for this elsewhere in the state, we really just did our, made our best educated guess in consultation with planning and with Public Works and legal to see what makes sense given the types of project applications that this type of a Good Life District is supposed to generate. So, we will be carefully monitoring them, and if it looks like it's a barrier, we'll be back to you with a recommendation to reduce the fees.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Something else to note is, the fee does not apply if somebody's responding to our request for development proposals. So, if we issue a development proposal, for example, for how to develop city-owned land, it responded to that request for proposals, would not have to pay an application fee. So, if we continue to drive that development, that would be fee-free to anybody responding to our initiatives.
Mr. Stell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have a couple of questions. The first one on the administrative part of it, the council's not included in that. Is that by statute? My question is, if we're going to, I think, if we're going to approve this stuff, I think we should be at the table and be involved in the approval process.
So, the direct application review process really has two steps. One is an administrative review that would be done by various department heads or any other specialists that city administrator designates. Then, once that application is, has been reviewed, that administrative review team will make recommendations to you. You will review the final application process. Tearing it this way does one really important thing for developers. It lets us keep that initial application review process confidential, so that way a developer, maybe if they get halfway through and they change their mind, they would then get their materials back and move on with their day, but that way, they know when that application is ready, that it comes to you and is public in nature, so you do still have final approval. Administrative review just makes recommendations. We have no actual vote in the process. We're just there to do the technical vetting. You know, finance might vet some of the businesses' ability to deliver the project. I might vet their legal compliance. Public Works might vet the infrastructure and the capacity for our existing infrastructure to sustain whatever applications there, but in the end, you will get that application material and all those recommendations, and you guys get the final, the final say-so, the final approval. We've crafted it so that way, that can either occur at a regular meeting of council or that you have the ability to call special meetings just for application review. So, on a bigger project, it may be that you designate a significant amount of time to that review process, but I left both paths open for your consideration. Depends on how many meetings you want to have.
And then, we have final say, like on the street, it's, I've been asked, well, the developer wants a mortgage on all the land, or he wants all the land deeded to him, and then also, the developer wants all the taxes deeded to him, but the council has the final say on the ground that they can have.
So, yeah, on.
Back, and also the tax proceeds.
It would depend. If the request was made as part of a response for a development proposal, we would have set that framework out when we issued the proposal. For a direct application, if you note, there's some requirements about, for them, for any applicant, for the funds, to show that they have the ability to deliver those projects. So, this is designed to really be application-specific, and ideally, for the same process to work for an application made tomorrow as one made in twenty thirty-five, as one made in twenty forty-five, big or small, either way, each of those applications should get a very specific, customized look by the ten of you for that consideration and evaluation as to whether they meet the program requirements, whether it's a transformational project, whether we have the infrastructure to sustain it, or whether this creates the infrastructure. It won't be an easy process for you guys, but it'll be a good public process, application by application.
Could you give an example of a typical project that we might see coming down the road?
Ideally speaking, there won't be any typical projects. The point of this program and this act is that these will be transformational and unique projects that will spur economic development. So, if, you know, if I were to come as a developer with a project for some sort of large tourism draw, I might, I would make my application. I would include all of those sales pitches, those answers to the questions contained in the program ordinance. How is this going to actually drive economic growth? How is it going to generate revenue? Will it bring tourists in? A lot of those really key, important questions, so that way, you can reality test my application and see, can I, can I deliver on my promises? Is this a good return on investment on an application-by-application basis? Ideally speaking, you're going to get projects I can't contemplate that'll be transformational and unique enough, but that will be one of those questions for you to answer. Is this, within the program goals, is this a unique project, or is this a run-of-the-mill project? This isn't a program for run-of-the-mill projects. It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for once-in-a-lifetime projects, so.
In reading the article, it allows the city to do infrastructure work, so does the application come from the city, then?
So, that's one of the three paths. City, if the city has a proposal to develop something, for example, infrastructure or portion of. something, for example, infrastructure or portion of a project, that would come straight to council. It would skip the administrative review process because it would have been developed by the administrative team already. So that will come straight to you. Any of those requests for funds, because this is a restricted fund, you have to authorize removal of money from that fund for those reasons, so.
And I guess final, finally, I think the 3%, I, I think that should be negotiable. That, that's a, seems like a high figure, especially when you're talking about big amounts of money.
So, yeah, so we, that 3% fee is the same as the other economic development programs you have, that legislature has authorized. It's also the same as what the state would charge out of that revenue if the state were to administer it. Ideally speaking, we're going to do more with that 3% than the state would do. We will administer this routine program and collect the occupation tax and distribute it all with that same amount of money. So ideally speaking, we will do more with that money than the state will do.
Do you foresee adding on to city staff then to administer this program?
That's possible. I think, given the scale and scope of this project, it's possible, for example, finance may need assistance in, in developing, collecting, and administering that occupation tax.
And we will have, so Director Finance Gleason, he is already planning on tracking the amount of time that his team spends sending out the tax notices, collecting, auditing if necessary. So we'll have a good idea. Best-case scenario, we'll have two quarters' worth of experience and we'll know what track the legislature takes in the next legislative session. And so we'll have all that information at the point in the time when we would be making a recommendation or asking you to consider changing to a state-collected sales tax. So we, we will track it. We don't anticipate hiring anybody immediately. The finance department team is simply going to pull together, get the work done, and track their time to see how much time it takes, and then we'll report back on that. The, the nice thing about this program, those, for the city, is that we do get to take that administrative fee and pay ourselves, reimburse ourselves for the cost of administering the program 100%. So we will be able, this won't be additional tax burden on, or detriment to any other fund.
Thank you.
To follow up on Mr. Stelk's question then, the ultimate decider of how the Good Life District money is spent is the city council, and the ultimate decider on what happens with city-owned property is the city council. Is that correct?
Correct. This is, this is your program ordinance to develop and administer on behalf of the citizens of the city of Grand Island and yours to be good stewards of.
Mr. Lanfair.
We're going to go back to, I have trouble handing over city real estate without getting real estate returned. But my concern is this. I live out there by the Conestoga Mall. I see it. Until the fair came to town, I didn't see much financial success. What happens if they fail? What happens if they go bankrupt? It does happen. I've seen it too many times over my lifetime. What happens to that land?
So this, this program ordinance stays operational regardless of any business in town's success or failure. As businesses make direct applications for program funds, the financial feasibility of any particular applicant is one of the things that will both be administratively tested, then ideally tested by you. One of your duties under this program will be to be good stewards of those program funds and make sure there's a return on investment there. So all those sort of tough questions for any applicant, regardless of their scope or size, will be important to ask. This just gives the framework for you to be able to ask those questions of an applicant as applicants show up. We'll also be able to customize the award to make sure there's certain protections and security for the city regardless of, of the size or scope or magnitude of any project that's applied. Making sure we have those safeguards so that way we are good stewards of those taxpayer dollars will be important. It's one of the big expenses that those application fees will need to cover because depending on the scope or the size of the project, the specialty legal work that might be needed to give those protections might be expensive.
I'm going to trust you because I saw that, what you, the program, that what you put forward is very, very impressive. But I've seen over my years, the years when I was in construction, these Austin page, ostentatious projects go, go off the rails. Is there a way that we could retrieve the land legally?
Application by application, one of the things that my job will be to do and my part of the administrative review will be to do the sort of risk analysis for you all on the projects and what protections you might ask for to help deal with those. But those questions are so application-specific, I don't think I can say exactly what protections now, but I will have those answers for you as applications roll in.
And council member, nothing that's before you tonight asks the city to transfer any land. We're not at that point yet.
No, I understand that. What happens if the, the area does not generate the massive amount of money they're going to need?
So that's one of the criteria you'll need to evaluate by application is can they deliver that return on investment. The legislature has built into a, into the Good Life District Transformational Projects Act some different benchmarks. Those are separate from the act that creates this program ordinance, though. If development proposal, or certain development benchmarks aren't met at the three, five, and seven-year marks, the Department of Economic Development has some paths ahead of them. But luckily, that's their problem, not our problem for right now. Hopefully, we'll be in good shape.
There is, but you can, this is kind of a flexible agreement when we can modify it to our, to protect ourselves, right?
Yeah, within the bounds of the law. But yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of options and flexibility for it.
And if necessarily bring it back. Next question is, that sits on the wrong side of the railroad tracks. It's kind of an old expression. But utilities going over there is going to be pricey, and it's going to come down, as far as I can see, to the city to survive, provide them. Is there anything in there to reimburse the city?
So, so this program ordinance creates a lot of different ways we can address infrastructure. We could choose to build the infrastructure. We could reimburse the developer for the infrastructure. But whether there's adequate infrastructure or, or whether the project creates adequate infrastructure is one of the questions you will have to answer for every application for program funds, regardless of where it's located or how big or small that project is. So, yeah, you'll be hearing lots of infrastructure-related questions as these applications come in.
Okay, so then we can make some amendment. I bring this forward. I know the mayor knows about the veterans' concerns about the land north of the cemeteries, that we could hang on to it in some way. So, but as far as your plan, at this moment, I would say go with it.
This puts you guys in the driver's seat.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. That's a lot of work that you've done so far. I appreciate it. I'm not sure I understand all of it because it's still a lot of like lawyer talk. So I have a few questions.
Okay.
In the original plan that was put forward, because it was done by Woodsonia, a private developer, I couldn't tell by reading this if there's any restrictions on us to follow their plan or how it impacts how we make decisions.
Really, the one place that that interplays, there's two places that interplays with their application. First, it creates the program area boundaries. And then the second, there's a provision that gives them some safeguards to not have to duplicate their work. Materials that they've already given to DED, they can resubmit to us. So that way, they're not reinventing the wheel a second time over. That's really the, the two places this overlaps right now. Otherwise, this is kind of a standalone program.
Okay. Anybody, not just Woodsonia, but anybody who puts forward a project that is within the district, are there different qualifications at all? I didn't see anything in here, for their own land or using the tax that comes from their, that comes from their business?
There is, there are some minor protections for the Good Life District applicant, but otherwise, no, like I can't, if I own a small business there, I can't say my portion of taxes is mine to spend unless I'm the Good Life District applicant.
Okay. They're not, they're not-
We're not going to have to maintain 1,000 separate small accounts in, in this all.
Good. Good answer. Good answer. Chuck asked about the boundaries, and those will come to us to approve if they change. Is that whether we make that desire to change and expand or if Woodsonia, because they have an, an opportunity to do so as well, correct?
For expansions of the district, that goes, those are applications made either by the developer or by the city to the Department of Economic Development, who would certify the new program boundary in any expansions. When they get, when they give that to us, we would come back with an amendment of this ordinance to change that program boundary.
Okay. Okay. On to Mitch's question about the different steps and the, the fees. I assume the bigger the scale of the project, the bigger the scope, that's why the fees go up. But are, you've said that we'll log that and we'll track that. Do we have a mechanism? In my business, we track every hour, every project, every hour, every day to a client. Do you have ability to do that to where, you know?
We have engineers on staff.
And lawyers.
Yes, they do track their time on projects.
I assume down to a very-
Community development and engineering. Yes.
And, and most of these fees are fairly similar to those of you who work in any, or work in conjunction with any sort of banking industry, two origination fees and application fees on loans. This amounts to two one-hundredths to five one-hundredths, depending on the scale. So it's, it's a relatively nominal amount for these fees. And, and I think that we will be the first to come in and tell you if we have missed the mark, and this is costing us way more work than we realize and those need to go up. If it turns out these are a piece of cake to process, you know, we'll, either way, we'll come, we'll come back to you there. It's really hard for us to tell before we know what kind of applications are going to come through. Where we are the first in the state to do this, we are the first in the state to try to hit that mark right. And hopefully, we did. But if not, we'll be back.
Is it, is it fair for us to, you know, give you, I, I agree. Estimating a project, I've got some clients in the audience, they know how hard that is for me. Estimating how difficult, that's a very difficult thing to estimate, how much time you're going to spend on something, especially if you haven't done it. But is it fair to say we can readdress this? You know, when Chuck brought up that, you know, somebody puts together a 10, $100 million project and we deny it, the chances they spent, we spent all 50,000 of that. I don't mind recouping our costs, but we shouldn't make money off of, if we didn't use all of that fund. So I just, I just want to be strategic about how we capture that time and how we bill that out.
Yeah. And, and I think ideally speaking, especially with the first few, you may not reject it. You may send them back with more work and instructions to come back to you with changes. So it's actually possible on a lot of those, you may see the same application multiple times as the, as we fine-tune it and develop it. But yeah, we, that-
One fee though, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, one fee there. So yeah.
Mitch was about to blow a gasket.
If they do, if they do more work because we request more work, we're not going to charge them for us to do that. But like I said, if, if that turns out that it's disproportionate, that's something you can always revisit and reevaluate.
If we entertain a project, so if we say, you know, we want, we want a fund center. City council says, we need this. And we, we say, we put an RFP out there, that's where they wouldn't need to pay a fee, right?
Correct.
To do it. Being careful with my words here because you're a lawyer. If we put an RFP out, in the past, Laura has told me that if an applicant contacts us individually, that has been in the verbiage of a RFP, that if they reach out to a council member, that disqualifies them.
If, if when we get there, there are certain provisions we'll put into place to avoid anti-competitive responses. You don't want inside, you know, if the city council's in that driver's ship, it should be open and public and transparent. You don't want backdoor deals with government money. If we get to that place, we'll include, we can include in that, in that request those advisements for you so you know what questions to answer and not answer. An RFP that's issued typically has those restrictions in there. This is where you go with questions. This is how you do questions so that everybody who has responded gets the benefit of that same answer. But, you know, we will, we can do that specific advisement as those projects come into play.
But if a project is not an RFP project, if someone were to come to us, there's no restrictions on something like that?
Like right now, if I were to call you up at night and ask you about my plans to build a coffee shop empire, I can call you all I want.
Oh, okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't-
Yeah.
Out of bounds there. I, I think that answers all my questions. I think you did a good job putting this together. I assume, like I said, it's a lot that, I don't speak that language, but it seems like we're covered. And I think the best thing for all the comments anybody here's made is that it's amendable. We can still adapt, and the economy changes one way or the other. The state changes one way or the other. We have the ability to come in and say, within these bounds, we can make these changes.
Ideally speaking, by 2050, there'll be projects we can't even contemplate now.
That flying car and thing, you know, we were supposed to have already. Sure. Very good. Thank you. Mr. Brown, I overlooked you. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, respectfully, Pat Brown's been waiting for time to speak.
I just called him.
Quite a while.
First of all, accountants track their time too. By the way, I just want to add that in. So, so to follow up on, on Mr. Stelk's question, it's not anticipated to add any finance staff. So council last week passed a permitting software, and we're going to use this software to build an online portal for our food and beverage tax, for EEA tax, and then this would be also for the Good Life. So hopefully, everything will be electronic so that, you know, we won't have to open mail, we won't have deposit checks and, and get everybody on that online portal. And that would increase our efficiency twofold, so.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Nickerson?
Finally, I'd just like to say that I really do appreciate the work you've put into this. You could put in the footnotes that Councilman Nickerson has heartburn over the fee structure currently, and that's okay. I, I think that 50 grand after 10 million is still too high, but we're going to start somewhere. But I, what I want to really let you know is that your delivery tonight has been very telling on how much you've immersed yourself into this whole Good Life District thing. I mean, there's not a question that was thrown at you that you weren't able to answer in the proper way. And so that tells me a lot about you. And I don't know if you did this on your own or if you had the help from all the other attorneys here on staff, but I don't know how that all works. The end product, a lot of work's been done to it, but you are owning it tonight, and you are delivering it, and you're letting us know in, in ways that we can comprehend. And I appreciate that. That immersion is there. So you are Mrs. Good Life District tonight, as far as I'm concerned, because you know this thing inside and out. So thank you for that.
Well, thanks. I'll, I'll take credit for all the good things, all the typos or everybody else who helped me. It's their responsibility now.
There you go.
I, I was very lucky with a lot of help. A lot, there were a lot of folks who had second-sense eyes on this to catch those things that you miss when you get too close to a document. So, no, I had lots of, lots of help, but only on the bad parts, not the good parts.
Your help. Thank you.
Mrs. Fisk spent many hours preparing ordinance number 9983. Her work is excellent.
Please vote. Motion, sorry, motion adopted.
Lastly, council, we have agenda item 7A, executive session to discuss contract and real estate negotiations and for protection of the public interest. Council members, is there a motion to adjourn from this meeting and go into executive session? Mr. Lanfair?
I move we go into executive session for protection of the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Lanfair. Mr. Pollock?
And I would second that.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
We're going into executive session at 7:09 PM.